Um, so I'd like to call to order this um when I'm select board meeting. March first of two thousand twenty-two. Um, we continue to have our meetings virtually via Zoom. Um, so this meeting is being recorded. We will take all roll call votes and um we'll start with a a roll call attendance. So Gary.
Here, here a choose my present.
Catherine Harrison present. So our board is present. We have our TA Tom Younger, I have a recording secretary Catherine Tinsley. And various other people who will be joining us. So we'll begin at uh six thirty. Um, and we begin as we always do with public input. We take a couple of minutes to hear from anyone who um would like to speak on items that are not on the agenda. And if there are folks like that that would like to say something or ask a question, give us some input. Put your name in the chat or and I see someone has Susan Mailen has raised her hand. Susan, she have a comment?
Yeah, um, I would like to thank Diane Buco and Gary Cheeseman for their vote. Last week to maintain the integrity and the autonomy of the town clerk's office by voting. To indeed confirm the two election workers that Trudy Reed, our town clerk had put forth. People shouldn't be excluded from being election workers because of the groups that they join. Unless they're subversive, violent, or fly in the face of basic democratic principles. Um, and I found it rather alarming that that this was just kind of flying under the radar. And if those two people hadn't stopped it, it probably would have progressed. Um, and the the next step after deciding who you want for election workers then would be deciding who you want to vote. And therefore excluding people based on religion, ethnicity, sexual orientation, age, whatever. And it's a very slippery slope. Um, you don't need a January sixth issue or insurrection in order to lose the right right to vote. It can be whittled at a little bit at a time, and I think that's what's happening here. And I say thank you to the two of them for holding the line and thank you for Trudy Reed's participation as well.
That's it. Okay, thank you, Susan. I would normally not respond. Um, but clearly that was um that was pointed to me. And I'm not going to comment except to explain. Um, and I was would have done this last week, but um never was really given an opportunity to. So my comments at the beginning um were perhaps not well heard. And they were that we had received, all the select board members had received a number of comments, uh emails from residents who had a concern. And as always, I listened to those concerns and I had literally just been getting them. So all I asked for and all I ever expected was just one week to understand what the concerns were and that get back to people that which would have been this week. And I would have said, I now have some information. I did some research because I take everybody's comment seriously. And I would have explained, um, you know, why I asked for waiting. I believe we'll probably have more election. Um, you know, voter people to a point. So Susan, that was, I want to clear up right now for for everyone. But that was not an attempt to stop anything. It was an attempt to have an opportunity to respond to constituents. Um, or at least understand a large number of constituents complain. So I'm very sorry if anyone interpreted that correctly. Uh, it would have been on the agenda this week had it been allowed to go as it was. I think it's the job of all select people to listen to and take seriously and try to understand and tease out where some of the comments are, why and whatever. So anyway. Um, thank you for that opportunity to explain. I I completely agree with you. Um, there are two, there are several points of view on this and on all of these issues and 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 they will be heard over time. Is there anyone else who would like to make any comments tonight? Okay. Uh, we will move on then. Um, we have just, it's all about ATM these days. We have just two um announcements. And Tom, if you'll, if we can have the screen share, um, if well, we just have a couple of announcements. Are we going to be screen sharing? Okay, so just we could put it on the announcements.
Thank you. Uh, Michelle was just talking about it. One of these days I'll have a meeting with everybody, hopefully sometime together. Oops, I just.
Oh, screen sharing stopped. There we go.
Okay, here we go. Thank you.
If we can just get to announcements. There we go. We're getting it. Okay, there we go.
Okay, thank you. First announcement is based on our annual town meeting. Uh, we will be holding it at the Buca School on Saturday, April second at one P M. Inside, uh, we will be working on uh how seating requirements are and other other aspects of it between now and that town meeting. Our backup date uh will be April ninth at one o'clock. And generally, that is only if we don't uh receive a form at that meeting.
Okay, that's our announcements. We'll slide right into reports, which is also you, please, Tom.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. First, um, this is all generally good news, but uh first is our free cash was certified today by the Division of Revenue Division of Local Services. And the good news is it is the third highest free cash that we have on record, at least from D L R uh from fiscal year two thousand four. The number was one million, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand and fifty-seven dollars. That's the highest we've had since since uh F Y seventeen, which was um, F Y eighteen, which was just slightly over one point two million. The highest we ever received to I can check on our records was almost one point four million back to F Y seventeen. Uh, now because of this, we can finalize the use of the free cash within the budget and finalize a warrant in the next uh day of so with the uh Finance Committee. One thing that's interesting and I'm a numbers person, not necessarily boring, but I'm a numbers person and going through. Sorry, that was probably D O R on my phone, so you know you got that wrong.
Well, somebody wants you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, but a couple of areas that um Jamie and I talked about and going in the future with the hopeful having a new treasurer collector onboard, which I'll be will be submitting a name to the board for their next meeting to make an appointment on is is a couple of areas, small areas uh regarding our receivables, which the treasurer collective, the new treasurer collector can work on to even possibly increase up free cash number more for uh next year. So I just wanna sorry. Uh, life was so much easier when I had a a dialing phone.
Not really.
There are areas here that, a couple of areas in the short term that we can work on on our receivables to even increase that number going forward. But I do want to thank our finance department and our finance committee and the board for working with this number. There's still a number of communities who are out there that have not received uh received the free cash number. But if anyone is interested, you can go on to D O R D L D O R Division of Local Services website to read the history of free cash for any community in our Commonwealth. Uh, next, uh, we had a regional meeting today of the North Shore Coalition, primarily discussing um with the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development Development regarding their new uh procedures regarding increased housing development for M B T A communities. Uh, we will be doing a presentation to the board uh in the next couple of meetings regarding that. Uh, that is if any community has a station within a half mile of the station uh that they needs to be a zoning bylaw presented by the community to address housing in those areas. We do have one which is a half mile from our uh station, which is the train station in Hamilton. We do not have uh bus transportation in our community. So that would not affect us. It's just a train station. And as I said earlier, I will be, the finance director will be presenting a name to the next board, select boards meeting to a recommendation for an appointment for top treasurer collector. Under your bylaws, the select board is the appointing authority uh for the treasurer collector, but we will have all the information to you well before um the meeting. We're checking references at this point. And I believe that's it right now, Madam Chair.
Okay, thanks. I only have one um announcement, so to speak, um for the chair's report, and it's a sad one. Um, we're marking the passing of someone who was important to Wentworth. She's a was a long-term time resident of Wentworth and she passed away last Friday. Um, she had several marriages, so a few names, but we knew her, know her best, knew her best as Nancy Sullivan. Um, she lived in Wentworth for a while and she's probably most known to the people who were around in the nineteen nineties because she was our first. Well, we didn't call her our first a town administrator, but she acted as our first town administrator, as I recall, and I've been reminded. I think we called her an executive secretary at the time. Um, so um she served in our capacity for a couple of years and continued to live in in Wentworth. She was a very accomplished woman, um had a lot of experiences in her life and we missed her when she moved from here, um and we'll we'll miss her very much now. So she will be um her, I believe her funeral is Saturday and she will be buried um on Saturday at in Wentworth at the main street cemetery. So just wanted people to know about that and to um send our condolences to her friends and family and how sad we are that she's will will miss, will miss Nancy. So that's all I really have for my report tonight. Uh, any of Gary or Diane have anything you wish to? Diane, you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, so um no minutes tonight, no new business. We're all about annual town meeting warrant articles. Um, and this is really a a continuation of the review of the um warrant articles that we began next week and um we will, I say with confidence, finish completely um next week so that we can get the warrant book off to the printers. With that, um I will give it to Tom because he has been working very hard to put this together for us.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. And I do okay, there we are. Uh, thank you for that. Um, we have been working on putting the articles together and we've been updating them and we can go through them individually right now. Um, of where we are with them. Uh, if you want to go through article by article.
Sure.
Great, thank you. Uh, Article one is our operating budget. We now have our free cash number, so we will be working with the Finance Committee uh tomorrow evening to finalize the budget items, so how much we're going to be using of free cash, so then we can totally uh update uh our commentary. On the sur- not on the surface, we actually have a balanced budget. The uh question that we have now is how much of free cash are we going to be utilizing uh for the budget on both operating and uh for the capital budget. And we hope to finalize that tomorrow evening. On Article one.
Okay.
Just on the screen share, just there we go. Article two is the same similar to what we said earlier is what would be the number of free cash that we do need to transfer to balance the budget. On the paper, we do have a balanced budget. This is more of an accounting issue to make a determination of a source of revenue that we're going to be adding into the budget. Article three is very similar on the free cash is don't go by everything, anything that's below, this is F Y twenty-two information. Don't go by that. We have to include which capital items that we're going to be utilizing free cash for in any capital items that we may not be utilizing in the budget, but may be covered by opera funds when the select board reviews that in the upcoming months uh going forward. As we stated, opera funds do not require a town meeting approval. The only approval body is the select board. Article four, uh prior year bills. Uh, and we do have four bills that require a forfeits majority at town meeting. They make up a total slightly over seven thousand dollars with almost six thousand of that being the bill from previous fiscal year from our cable attorney.
Can can we ask questions as we go through?
Sure.
So can we, the ones that are updated and ready to go, can we take our vote on them now and get those recommendations in there?
The only thing I would uh wait on that is you could always amend the motion after a future meeting is that if uh our finance director has any other bills, but the last three, last three were from the finance director and the Solomon bill came through looking at previous records in town hall. You can make that recommendation if you want, Diane.
So do the other members want to do that at all? Or you, would you prefer to wait?
Well, personally, since we're going to have to do this for most of the other articles next week, I just assume we I don't really care, uh but things could change. Um, okay, so unless we're absolutely sure of something, I just assume make a recommendation on probably, well, definitely all of the articles next week and any other votes that we have to take um for these articles. But Gary, do you have an opinion?
I don't think that either way is fine by me. I think those that are definitive here already will just take a few seconds to vote uh next week, but uh we can get some work out of the way. Whatever you want, Diane, I'm fine.
Well, I, no, I just thought if next week we'll have probably a meeting with other things that aren't necessarily just ATM. So maybe we could get some of that done, but if it's not going to take that long, that's fine either. Just throwing, just questioning.
We'll ha- we'll have one motion that we'll make over and over again. Um, so we'll have it all ready to queue up for next week. Okay.
If I could put in one comment, though, going back to um, I think was Article one at the last meeting. Do we have the lease agreement in there that pushes it to a two-thirds instead of majority vote?
Uh, I'm sorry, Gary, what was that regarding the two-thirds vote?
Well, I I think the last uh town meeting, when we got the first couple of articles, we had to do some quick shuffling on the floor because we had included a lease agreement expenditures in there that required two-thirds rather than a majority vote. So just some of the check on.
Uh, good, good thinking, Gary. I don't remember how we pulled those out, but we did have to vote those.
I I think we pulled them out by multiple uh floor uh motions by the one select board member.
So maybe we can, we can be a little more proactive this year, and if there are leases, we can separate them out from the beginning. Okay. Also, just a general comment. Um, I know a couple of us, maybe all of us have sent some sort of, you know, scriveners errors or typos um to to Tom on the words that are already there that we think are going to stay there. I presume that Tom, you'd like us to continue to do that on these different versions if we find something new that's just a typo, let you know.
Please do.
Okay.
Appreciate you have the editors.
It's a lot of words to keep looking at over and over again. So second, third pair is always good. Okay.
Okay, uh, Article five is accepting our cemetery trust funds that we've received in N F Y twenty-two. Uh, this is just a normal standard acceptance law, acceptance article. Requires a simple majority.
Uh, a comment or a question on that one? Um, two questions, actually, since where we refer to the annual report or section one of the town report. And but we might it may have just arrived in people's hands at the time of of the meeting. Should we put um a balance actually in the article? It says vote to accept the cemetery and other trust funds as printed in part one.
Well, maybe multiple. What the recommendation I would probably say is that we put an addendum at the back book and reference it in the commentary.
Okay, that's a great idea. The other thing about that is we've done this and we've just, I I'm fine with it. But we've called articles as we did in the past, five, six, and seven, um which are routine articles, a consent calendar, and I just wanted to make sure we were doing that deliberately this year, deliberately this year, and that everyone was okay with that. Fine with me. I just uh, we we vote, we voted those. We have been writing them together.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, sorry. That's, I'm done with that. Thank you.
Okay, just have to have this moved up slightly to Article six. It is to transfer this year some of six thousand dollars from the self cemetery lots to the cemetery perpetual care fund for the maintenance of our cemeteries. We believe we did six thousand last year and we may be updating the amounts in the commentary, but this is the standard article that you've basically utilized in the past. And I've worked with Ja- Gary on this also, so this is the one article that Gary had some worked on with the Mr. Purdy uh on the Finance Committee.
Okay, and that reads, reads okay to you now, Gary?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, Diane, I spoke over you.
No, that's okay. I was gonna just thank Tom because he knew I was gonna ask that question.
Okay.
Thanks. Uh, Article seven is our routine article to transfer thirty-five thousand from the F Y twenty-three water operating bu- budget into the water capital reserve account. Um, this is, we've been doing this on a regular basis. It's like you do on in your home, where you may be transferring money from your checking account to your savings account, which is filed for the water department. And this is used for um capital projects uh going forward in the future. Article eight is our standard is basically the standard article for most communities uh to uh vote to accept the available, in our case approximately a hundred and fifty about really one fifty-one thousand dollars in chapter ninety funding for our state uh for roadway purposes. There is another bill going through the legislature to give us some one-time increase road money. But that, at this point, is not close to approval yet from the state. Okay, I've been work CPA. I've been working with uh the CPA to get the correct language into here. So the numbers here, for the most part are basically F Y twenty-two. They are intending, though, if you look at the chart on the bottom, that those are actually correct, is that their intention is sixty-three thousand nine hundred for historical res- resource reserve transferring to that. Sixty-three thousand, same number for open space and recreation, is sixty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-one for community housing. But I'm getting the exact figures and the wording for the language that they're putting in there to transfer from the fund for debt service for the following projects, but they'll be completed hopefully within the next forty-eight hours.
So we have all the balances and everything that I know that um
Yeah, we have.
That group was looking for.
We have all the information. We're just trying to put it in the correct language going forward.
Always a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. And please apologize, I've really never dealt with the CPA community, except for you. It's a good thing for the town. Uh, but that's one of the things I'm not a whole lot familiar on, and I rely on all of your history on that.
Can you scroll back to that? Cause I don't you know, I see, so they have how many? So they have the community.
Are these the actual?
Space. Right?
I don't think these are this year's.
They're not this year's, right?
Projects, no.
No, okay. I've got all the numbers. I'm working with the committee. I'm fitting the language incorrectly.
Okay, including the projects and whatnot. Okay, because it's, it seemed like last year's.
Yeah, it does.
The language we have submitted it to Town Council, they're reviewing, possibly updating the language to amend the amendment to agreement for between Hamilton and Wentworth uh for the establishment of regional school district. Council has the language and is reviewing it um for additional changes. Uh, the one thing is that's going on is that council is the same for Hamilton. They both have K P law. So whatever they're reviewing for us, they will be reviewing, they're reviewing for Hamilton also.
So if I could just step in, I think that that the title of Article ten is terrible in that it just tells nobody anything.
This is this is directly what the school district sent me.
Oh, that's from the school district. I thought that was from K P law.
No, no, K P.
I hope not.
No, no, no. This is directly from the, from the district.
Okay, so we're working on that.
Yeah.
And I can, I think it is going to be weird, though, because the document that is going to be changed is called the amendment to the agreement between the towns of Hamilton and Wentworth as it stated. So we're actually, if I have this right, I actually don't know what the change is, but we're amending a document that is called an amendment to the, on agreement. So it's going to be a little weird, but.
But it still doesn't say what piece we're amending. That's what I think should be in the title, that we're amending the, the election of the committee. Not the establishment of the school district. So I thought that that piece of it was I don't want people to get the wrong idea. I want them, some people don't read the little words. They just read the bold.
You were totally, totally correct, Diane.
Yeah, that is true. And and from, from what I've seen, we're going, I think the town uh, the town meeting is going to need a lot more information than even is in here. For, I think this is meant to be the warrant or a pro- a proposed warrant, and as I'm sure K P is working on. That just, this is very vague. So not only is the title vague, Diane, I agree with you. But the actual, you know, the warrant itself is is vague, so I'm hoping. I guess I never really, I know that we have to generally sign a disclosure, whatever it's called, allowing K P to review something. The same group to review something for both towns, and I guess there's some efficiency in there, but I I guess I I always have to assume that when they review it, they have a a Wentworth hat and a Hamilton hat. Because what might work or be in the best interest of Hamilton is not necessarily in the best interest of Wentworth. So that's just, I guess, a comment, and and I know that they represent a lot of community, so I guess I just have to hope that that's.
So if I, I could jump, and I think that all that were is trying to be amended is the process of the election of the school committee members, whereas it would be the same for Hamilton, Wentworth is just trying to bring it more into state compliance. So um I understand where you're coming from, Catherine. You want to be, you know, take care of us. We're your priority, but this, in this case, I think it's more. So um, I understand where you're coming from Catherine. You want to be, you know, take care of us. We're your priority, but this, in this case, I think it's more. Generalized. So.
Okay, so with regard to this, I'm sorry Gary, go ahead.
Now, have all three parties actually opened up or agreed to open up the agreement?
I think the school committee has the ability to do that on their own. They don't, it's their, their purview to open the agreement. I do agree with your question though, has all three, have all three parties and we don't know yet for us. Agreed on the action. Um, that and the way it is being implemented.
I don't know. I, I think I'm aware that, that the school and and our two, the two town clerks. Corinne, Cal and Trudy Reed, they've all discussed this and are all in agreement about this one change. So. But I don't know, we haven't really. Been too involved.
Well, mine is more a procedural question that, you know, I should think that all three entities have to first. Vote to open up the agreement, then consider this change, if you will. And then uh, proceed to other matters in the agreement or close the agreement again. So. I'm thinking there's more procedure here.
Well, we should check with council on that because again, my recollection is that the school committee. Can choose to open the agreement. They can make a recommendation to the towns. As this is for um, for changes to the agreement. Um, and then the town, you know. We put it on the warrant or don't, and then we vote, um, and then we vote. I don't, I don't know though. You know how? So there's something in here that talks about regard to the, with regard to the size of the regional school committee. Um, I don't, that doesn't sound in line with what you just said Diane, which is what I understood was, is that it was. The way the voting.
I haven't looked at it lately, but I think the agreement, that's what the paragraph is called. But then in that paragraph, it goes through how the, the candidates take out their nomination papers. Where they take them out from, where they return them. And that, that process of it, but I think it's in that paragraph that's called. That I I don't recall exactly, but we should probably look at that too.
So if we have this many questions, I guess it's fair to say that we need a little, council needs to work a little more on this and Tom, maybe you can confirm to. Gary's question with, uh, probably with the school career with council on, you know, what is the actual process? Are we doing this? Does the school district have the ability to open?
Do we have the amendment to the agreement electronically?
Uh, we can work on that tomorrow afternoon.
Yeah, cause you could shoot it out. That would be nice to have it electronically and review it again for us.
Yeah, I don't think I've ever seen it. Okay. All right. That's article ten. A little more work on article ten.
Okay. Article eleven, basically we need guidance from the board. The article was to increase the select board from three to five members and to file. Uh, legislation with our representative and senator to receive legislative approval. The uh, discussion revolves around two issues, but pretty much only one at this point. The first issue was determining how the board would determine the elections and the last week. It was pretty clear that you wanted each slot to be its own separate. Um, individual, not necessarily putting them all in one pool and the top one gets. One's the, the three-year seat, the second one gets the two and the first. So that was determined last week. The question that is based on now, which has to be placed in the legislation is regarding. Um, elective approval of going townwide from three to five. Your options were to just do it at a town meeting, file legislation. Legislation gets approved late two thousand twenty-two and then the candidates are on the ballot in two thousand twenty-three. The other option that was being discussed was post-town meeting, should town media approve this? To have a townwide election to basically ratify uh, the vote. Uh, and then. Eventually, if it passes, um, have the new, uh, the candidates running for election. Council has advised that if you do the ballot vote. The ballot vote cannot occur until after the legislation is enacted. So if you were at town meeting approving article eleven. We file with our state, we're up in our state senator, nothing can occur until the legislations pass. Which we more than likely in the fall. And then after the fall, you either. Do a, if you wish to do a general election, either call a special election or wait till the. Uh, regular annual town election. Um, so you would not be having more than likely. An election for the membership until two thousand twenty-four. But that's a discussion for the boards to make a determination. So we can put it into a draft legislation and put it into the article.
So we could actually, so you said twenty twenty-four. But we didn't, we talked about having a ballot vote for the acceptance of the. The change as well as the candidates on the same ballot. You could do that in twenty twenty-three.
I'm sorry, can I skip that one? I'm apologize.
That's okay. I don't like that one, but.
Yeah, me too. Me too. Okay, so. We understand, I think, better now what the legal options are. Um, and our idea of, of possibly, you know, putting it on a ballot. Shortly after this town meeting is not going to work because it needs to be, uh, go through the legislature first. So. The question is then, as Tom put it. Do we want to, we said we want to put it on a ballot? Do we want to put it on the ballot? Put the question on the ballot in twenty-three and then vote the people in twenty-four. Or put the question on the ballot, on the ballot and the names of potential candidates, both in two thousand twenty-three.
Do we want to do this now or is this business item B?
This.
Either way.
Oh, because we haven't been through the whole, through the whole thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we can. I guess to follow the agenda, just remember that conversation we just had.
Yep.
Um, and Tom, if you want to get us through the rest of the warrant articles, the review of the warrant articles, then we'll come back and vote on what we want to do. Um, with article eleven, how we want to do the election.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
It should move pretty quickly right now. Uh, eleven would be a new bylaw for the community uh, from our police department to basically regulate. Um, soliciting at residents. Uh, and that would be giving a time limit of between nine AM and eight PM. Uh, a number of communities have uh, put this as a bylaw in recent times. I don't know how much of a issue it is in our community, but um, if you don't have a bylaw, you can't regulate it.
Okay.
Okay. Article thirteen um, is to um, amend our dog licensing fees. So that um. An intent, basically a non-nutored or sprayed uh, male or female dog uh, will be twenty dollars. Uh, to license a spayed female nude dog will be fifteen dollars.
So I have one suggestion on that. Um, I always think, I always. I often in town meeting, read the commentary more than I read the actual article and it seems like if it is possible. Um, it, this would be a good place to tell people what we're amending the license from and to. I don't, I should know this, having two dogs, but I don't know, I don't remember what the present fee is. So I think if we said the article would amend the bylaw by revising the do- dog licensing fees from blank to. Twenty dollars or something like that, would just, everything would be there that someone would need to know in order to, to vote on that.
We can update the commentary.
Okay. That's all I had on that one.
Article fourteen is another dog licensing amendment, which would allow us to accept master on a law six. Chapter one forty, section one thirty-nine C, which um, would basically negate. Uh, dog licensing fees for anyone um, seven-year-old.
Seems like a good idea.
Yeah, but still got a, still got a few years left on that one, but.
Yeah, my dogs have a few more. Okay.
I could have gone, my former town Belmont used to license cats, if you really wanted. I don't think anyone is interested in that.
I don't think so, I mentioned it.
Yeah.
Until tight the budget gets.
Yeah, right. Good point, Gary. We could be licensed, licensing lizards if we long, wait long enough. Okay, on that note.
Next one, uh, council in uh. Chair Harrison sent me some language, which would be changing the um, title. Of the amending the terms of the project. Uh, basically this is to amending the legislative action, which would expand, increase. The time of having the completion of the project. Okay.
And this was the one that we talked about months ago. Uh, the only thing I sent to, to um, Tom was the actual. Real title of the document that we're amending.
Correct. Article sixteen is a city petition. I'll be inputting the maps tomorrow. But this is the uh, citizen's petition by law to create an overlay district. So that mobile food vendors would be allowed on properties uh, in the town.
So there's a planning board hearing on this. Um, do we have a date for that?
They've scheduling it. They're posting it um, with the Salem News. I don't have the date in front of me, but I can forward it to the select board, but they've already.
I.
Got that.
Yeah, see if I put it on my calendar. I was, I think it might actually. I guess I don't know when it is. Um, it's pretty soon. I just wanted to be sure that we. I thought it was on the tenth, actually.
It is on the tenth.
Okay, so it's next Thursday. Um, so folks who want to understand this. Should probably tune into the planning board next week. Okay.
Okay.
A possible suggestion. Do we want to talk about sequence? Cause I expect the uh, three to five is going to draw the most interest. And I'd hate to see the dogs lose out if we lose a quorum after that occurs. So perhaps um, the current. Eleven, three to five ought to move down to just before the citizens petition. That way. The uh, those two or three dog and things that will go through pretty quick, I think. We'll make sure those are done and then we can get to the big questions of the uh, three to five and the uh. Citizens petition. What do you think?
I'm fine with that.
That's fine.
Me too.
I will move.
I think we had, what, a couple of years ago, we lost forum for a bit.
And yes.
Yeah.
So we lost quorum before the last article, as I recall, that was the day that we had to. Come up with a, a backup date on the floor.
Did someone challenge the forum at that meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, and it got counted and we didn't have a quorum.
Alright, yeah.
Um.
Okay, I'll move that to article sixteen. The uh, three to five.
Can you just add, change my name with, add the K in for my name? At the bottom there.
Oh, for the signature part?
Signature part.
And Catherine as chairman should be up top.
Okay.
I guess I didn't even read that. Yeah, I'll take an A and I'll take an A as a middle initial too, as long as we're on that.
Sure, definitely.
It is your middle initial, right? It's not like you're just.
It is. No, no, it's my legal name.
Yeah.
I like it too.
We can add the middle initials. They weren't on last years, but I can add the middle ones for this year.
Wow, um, and are we sure? I know it, I thought there were three positions up at the school committee.
Okay, uh, the election. They were all approved by the town clerk, by Trudy.
Okay.
She went through them. So if there was any errors, they've all been resolved.
Yeah, I noticed there was one correction made, but I guess I thought there were three.
Yeah, I thought so too.
And I thought there were only two on the library, so I'm just confused. But that could.
I'll go back to the library if there was a question on that one.
Yeah. Okay. So are you confident? Well, here's the question. Here's the power of Tom Younger. Um, there's some pretty significant stuff that I know council already has. But that they must have in final form in order for us to approve this and sign it and all of that next Tuesday. Do you feel reasonably com- comfortable that they understand that the council understands that and will have. The language all done for us? I think, uh, I actually, my really, my real concern um, in terms of council, I think council knows when our date. Uh, our ATM is and our deadline is. So I, I'm sure they're working very hard to have all those. Um, everything looked at, but the one in particular that I'm a, a little bit concerned about is the school one. I only got bits and pieces of that as it was going through the process, but you know, both the town of Hamilton. And the town of, of Wyndham and the school district had to agree with the general process that was being used. And I, I feel like that adds a layer of complexity. So Tom, I'm just, I guess, um, asking you to work your magic and make sure that. They have that language ready to go for us to approve, finalize, sign and recommend. You know, whatever action we want on that one in particular, but there are several.
I'll be with them on tomorrow.
Great. Okay, so we changed the order. We got some to update. We're waiting for council. And we'll have an approved, we believe we'll have, and now that we have free cash certified. We believe we'll have an approved budget and all the budget numbers complete um, after the uh, FinCom meeting tomorrow. Does that pretty much sum up where we are?
Pretty much. I mean, the good news is, is we're not, we're not in a deficit, deficit. We do not have to. Move numbers around. We do not have to lay off people or cut programs. So this year. This year turned out financially fine.
Yes, it's a good, it's good. We should have more in here like that and um, with the free cash as it is. Maybe even allows us to have a tiny bit of a buffer going into what is bound to be a difficult year next year. With the way the school budget has been a portion this year. So good news. So back to article eleven, I think now, although I should, let me ask, are we all set for now with our review of the articles?
Yes.
Yes.
Gary, okay. So the next item on the agenda is just that one question relative to the select board from three to five. Um, really, you know. When we wish the election to occur for, um, what do they call that? A- approval. The actual vote for acceptance, thank you, and. Um, election of the, of the additional, should it all be approved, election of the additional select board members. Comments?
I am totally crushed. I'm, I'm. Um, torn, really. I, I feel that we need. I feel that you have to have a ballot vote. And, and um, I really don't like to have a ballot vote and candidates on the same election, but I hate to push it off so long.
Likewise, I think the integrity of the election is paramount. That we, as we already decided to have essentially three different races. And I don't see that we can have the acceptance vote and the election of. Candidates at the same time as, as we talked before, that will leave. One sure seat and two possibles. So I think, you know, you know. This has, um, it is a long life, but it's a change to the government. That, uh, you know, we went one way for hundred and fifty years. So I think when, in twenty-four months. Given the uh, vote in April here, the acceptance after legislating. given the vote in April here, the acceptance after legislature. And then there could be a special election after that, that would shorten up the time period. But I think it's important to separate the election, sorry, separate the acceptance and the actual election of the new people sufficiently that all three candidates have a equal shot at it.
I guess I have a slightly different opinion of this than I may have even last year at this time. And it's because I spent so much time working on the recall petition. And, and that process calls for sort of, I don't know, option to, on this in terms of process, and that is on this, at the same election, there is a question that says, do you want to recall Joe Jones? Followed by, if yes, who do you want to vote for? And the names of all the candidates. So if we, if we council, town meeting, the legislature all thought that we could pull that off. In, in the unlikely event, I hope that we ever have a recall election, it seems to me that I'm really concerned about this going on until two thousand twenty four, who, who, who of us? I know I won't be on the board, but who else will be on the board? Who will be in town? A lot of things could change the understanding. You may be starting from scratch explaining it. So I, I do think that we can cleanly, at least if we can do it for the recall election, we can cleanly have an election in which the person whose term is up is on the ballot as they always would be. And we do as we would have put the question, would you like to increase to five, however it's worded? If yes, here are the people, you know, pick two. I, I think it, it, my understanding of it and my looking at it when we did the recall was that it was, you know, it's not ideal. Sure, I'd love to have the luxury of time, but I think this is a reasonable, it would be a reasonable compromise to to try to do them on the same election in two thousand twenty three.
But so a recall election would be one candidate. One race, would be one race. Would be the, the acceptance and a one race with a potential person that wouldn't count. Here we're going to do the, the current third seat, a two-year seat, and then a one-year seat.
But I think they would be different. I'm sorry, go ahead. I think I, we'd have to ask council again how this would look, but it feels to me in my, again, recollection of the work that we did trying to decide what to do with a recall. Provision. I think there's a question that says up for, you know, there's a ballot question that's just for the reelection of the candidate whose term is up. And then I think there's a separate question that says, do you want to change from three to five? If so, here are your choices. So I think they would be two different questions. So it's not like for the person, or we'll just get thrown in.
No, but I see four separate races on just that one ballot. I see one race that would be the third seat. And then I see another race that would be the acceptance. The acceptance of the moving to five, and then the third race would be a race for a seat on the board for two years. And then the fourth race would be a seat on the board for one year. Right, so that's four races.
Well, I, I think we've already said that if I want, if I wanted to be the fourth, you know, one of the two new select board members, that I would take out papers for either a is it a one or a two-year term? So it would be X number of names for a one-year term and X number of names for a two-year term. I, I think.
Those are separate races. Those are separate races. Right?
Yes.
Right, I guess. I don't know.
I'd like to get back, you know, to the, you know, given the mood of the country, I think integrity of the election is foremost. And I don't want to have a system where candidates can game or candidates are running under different circumstances for the same office. So that's why I really think that the election integrity trumps the timeline, because when, when that occurs, as Diane said, that you're going to have three elections plus the decision on the acceptance. So I still think we should have the acceptance first, and then the three elections that will come up even, you know. I don't want to have people gaming the system, knowing that one seat is absolutely going to be there. And two other seats maybe be there, you know. So what do you do as a candidate? You know, does everybody pile into the, the one that's guaranteed to be there? Or do I take my chances to go with one of the maybe seats? And I don't think we should have an election that goes into that position where you could game the system. And I'll be straightforward, upright. Here's seat one, here's seat two, here's seat three, you know. Put your name in there, they all come out even. And if, and if it takes to go to twenty four, then it may take twenty four, but you know, there may be a special election after twenty three that we can piggyback on to, you know, after getting the acceptance done.
So I just wanted to play that out to the twenty four. So in twenty four, if we did it that way, there would, we would already have decided, I guess, in twenty three, yes, we're going to have five select board members. So we're in twenty four. So the person who's presently on the board, whose term is up, aren't we still in a situation where we have two or three, I guess, three separate elections and people juggling around? I, I don't know if I like. System, but.
Yeah, I mean, you have to have the three elections, but there are for three seats that each candidate knows is going to be there. So that, you know, the seat for the regular three-year rollovers there, the seat for the the new three-year rollover there, and the seat for the other two-year or one-year where we want to stagger it is there. So my concern is that, you know, that's an even up, you know, you have the choice. The seat is going to be there. You invest your money, you invest your time, you pick the one you want to run for and let it play out. But if we do it at the same time, you know, how are you going to convince people that they should run for a office to not be, may not even be there?
I, I see that part, but I'm quite confident that there would be a way toward, so I understand your point about it, you know, maybe it's cleaner. But I'm quite confident that there would be a place that said that would that would make it clear, let's put it that way, that there was one position that was a matter of fact, it could just, may just, it, it would have, it would say, let me back up a second. If it was done at the same election, you'd have to separate out the question. Because it's like, if no, if people vote no, they don't want five. Then typically what would happen is the two, the, the votes for those two people who are the new people would not be counted. Again, I use my experience with the recall.
Well, yes, they would not be counted. So how can you convince someone to run for an office that may not be there? That's not fair to them.
Well, that's, you know, that's a valid point. And I don't know. I don't know whether people would run or not. I don't know whether people are even going to remember this in two thousand twenty four.
Well, that's why we're putting it down and writing now, you know.
Yes, yes. Anyway, I am not going to argue about this anymore. We, we have our opinion, the town meeting assembly may have another opinion, so we're sitting here arguing about something that, you know, we should have our, you know, we can have our opinions and, and we'll just it, we'll put it in there and we'll see what the town meeting wants to do.
But we still have to file what we want to do for the legislature, so we have to. And I appreciate the back and forth. I think the information is, is key. I never, you know, what I feel. Yeah, I guess I liked everybody's opinions on that. I don't, I think the conversation was good. So I guess we probably just have to take a vote. But.
Yeah, I, every time we talk about this, there's one, I feel like there's one more question, but at some point, you know, short of having invited council, let's just do it. And yes, what we're putting forward is what the warrant article will end up looking like, and then it has to be, you know, approved in whatever form the town meeting wishes it to be approved. So, so we.
So the wording.
Had a motion on this.
So the wording is the, we will have the acceptance vote at the first election after legislative approval. And then we'll have the actual election at the first opportunity after the acceptance vote. Does that work? Instead of saying on this exact date, because we need to consider the possibility of special elections or whatever in the interim there too.
Right, and we did. I think we had some, I'm just looking quickly. We had a motion to speak to that option. That we actually. Yeah, so the motion that we had, and I think this is, I think this is what you're saying, Gary. But it was to a motion that the Wenham Select Board requires an election to decide whether to accept the increase in number of select board members. Following enactment, acceptance will be presented at one election, and the new positions will be elected at the next election.
Sounds good. Think so, Diane?
Yeah, I do agree with that.
Okay, so that's the motion before us. Is there a, Catherine Tinsley, do you have that?
Yes, thank you.
So Gary made that motion, so I'll second the motion.
Okay, is there any further conversation before we vote? No, okay. Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Because I like to, you know, so go out with a bang. I'm going to vote no. On this, so, and then we'll, we'll at the end, we'll vote in general on whether we recommend favorable action on the warrant article. So we'll be voting on this. In the whole thing, again.
Next week, right?
Next week, next week, yes. I can't emphasize enough that we have to have it ready for the printer next week.
Right.
Okay, so Tom, do we have everything that we need for, for writing the warrant for the legislation for three to five now?
Right, I had various versions of the legislation, which I can you know. Just, I want just for clarification purposes, so I'm on the same page, is that town meeting approves the article to forward it to the legislature. Once the legislature approves this, the next step would be in a, an election to ratify a townwide election to ratify going to three to five. And then should that get approved, then your next election will be for the two members.
Two new members.
Two new members, yes.
And that will be at the same election that we would always, as always, have an election for the city, you know, there'll actually be three people on the ballot. In that election, because the.
Are you in a position?
Am I right on that?
Yeah.
Three races, yeah.
Yeah, three races. So are we saying at this point, just for clarification, should this get approved in November? Either the board calls for a special election sometime in the winter or spring, or we just go to the FY twenty three election for townwide, and then you would go to twenty four for the seats.
If there's no special election in the interim.
Or a special, right.
Yeah.
Those. Right. But I guess either of those could be a, a special election. Or the one that already exists that gets added on to, or a new one, right?
Which is why I think we need the wording of the next election and the next election, instead of tying it to a particular FY or period.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had that actual language in our last packet. So I can send it to you as we just voted on it.
Okay.
Okay.
All set.
Anything, anything else on that? Okay. So that's that, that's, we did be under old business and other matters, as may not have been reasonably anticipated by the chair for discussion only. Is there anything else that we need or want to bring up tonight for purposes of at least discussion or putting on another agenda?
I think agenda-wise or coordination-wise, we probably need to set a firm date as to when we meet with the Board of Health to finalize whatever PPE or whatever we need for a town meeting. So that we can, you know, have time enough to publicize that out.
Yeah. Okay, so Tom, can you check with the Chair of the Board of Health and see who would like to opine on that?
I will.
I don't actually think he's, yeah, I, we should have his, their opinion. We've said we would do whatever the Board of Health, you know, suggests.
Would you prefer if I just check with Dr. Ting to see if he would like to meet, or if he's fine, which is leaving it to the select board's decision?
I think.
Just trying to streamline.
Yeah, I, if, if they had the ability to meet, I, I think they probably, everybody might be more comfortable if we followed our usual take a recommendation. We're not required to in this case, because we're not in a state of emergency. But, you know, I think everyone feels a little bit, the whole idea is to make as most, as many people as possible comfortable coming to town meeting. So if the Board of Health has a recommendation, and it's probably best for us to hear it, that adds to the credibility of whatever it is we do.
And I don't think, I don't think it needs to be joint, do you? I think it's just a sequence. They meet, make a recommendation, and then we accept it. But as Catherine says, I think.
No, go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was saying, but I think, yeah, the main point is Catherine said, is to make people comfortable and ready to come to town meeting, feel that they're safe.
Alright. So I do think because we've not always been completely unanimous on this. If we could, if the Board of Health is willing to come, if we could start a meeting at six, and we give the first half hour of it, be joined with the Board of Health, and then they go off and we finish our select board meeting. I think there's some advantage to having us all in the meeting at the same time. But I know their schedules are varied, and I'm perfectly open to having, as Gary said, separate meetings with a recommendation. Or the other way, we just get to ask each other questions.
We can, we could try to meet in part of their meeting. I know they usually meet during the day, right, or early morning.
Right.
For you. We could try to do that if that's more convenient for them.
Okay, so maybe, Tom, you can give them the options, and whatever is convenient for them will work around. Obviously, in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, they don't have a meeting booked yet, but I can check with, follow up with Dr. Ting tomorrow.
Okay, great.
I had a couple of agendas.
Oh, go ahead.
To bring back the harassment policy, I don't think we ever finished that.
Yes. And that has been updated. Yeah, that, that's been updated, and it will be, it's going to come back.
It's, it's going to come back.
It's going to come back. I just got no, notified that it had been updated along with a code of conduct and.
Yes.
There's a third portion of that, which I'm forgetting right now, but. There's a third portion of that which I'm forgetting right now, but Tom and I have that on a list to put on agenda, on an agenda shortly.
A permitting job, just wanted to make sure that we get that going.
Uh, the permitting, oh, Laura's position will be posted this week to get that position in there. And then after that, we will be posting the administrative director of administrative services position. I don't believe we are going with an assistant town administrator at this point.
At one point, we, yes, I think the FinCom had a lot of conversation about that. I think at one point, though, we did say that. If it were possible that we would, we thought it would be helpful to have our permanent town administrator. On board to sort of shape that position, that one position.
The permitting?
Or maybe it's more than one position, the, not permitting, no, we're all ready with that one, I think.
Okay.
No, the one that is going to be whatever the rest.
That extra piece, yeah.
Whatever, yeah, that extra piece. But no, the permitting is separate, and I think Rich is quite anxious after, I don't know, three months or something to be done.
Everybody upstairs. Yeah, I'm concerned about that, yeah. And then, yeah, so. Yeah, so what was that, Tom? I don't remember what you, how you responded to the permitting position.
Next week.
Oh, it's going to be posted next week?
Yeah.
Okay, and then the screening committee to go forward with the TA search.
Tom, are you going to have an update for us on that whole thing next week?
Right, we, the, yeah, the deadline for the TA. Resumes is Friday. And I'll be notifying the board, then based how many we have received. The board can make their decision of how they wish to go forward on the screening committee in next week's meeting.
Okay.
My last question was. The next meeting, I didn't know if you wanted to see if we could meet just even a day earlier in case we have. Any more snaffles.
I think posting an extra meeting next week is a good idea, but Diane, I would suggest maybe, and we can post it now, that we post it. On Wednesday rather than on Monday, because it just gives everybody one more day to have things done. You know, and, and ready.
I was just thinking, because we wanted to make sure we got it to the printer or something, I don't know, I, I, that's why I was thinking Monday.
Yeah.
But.
Right, what do you think, Tom? How, what kind of shape are we in? Do we need to post two meetings next week just in case?
Just looking at the calendar.
Yeah, I don't know what else is on, who else is meeting next Monday, if anyone.
Um, no.
Or Wednesday for them.
Doesn't appear to be on, just double-checked this.
I actually have a comp, a conflict my, with another group on Monday night. I can. Uh, which is going to be hard for me to change. Didn't, I just looked at my calendar. So it's going to be hard for me to do the fourteenth.
Yeah.
But.
The seventh.
Any other.
There's nothing on the seven, on the town calendars.
Oh, right, that's right, it's the seventh. Yeah, that would be, that's, I was looking at the wrong day. We could post something for the seventh, and we know for sure that we're going to be meeting on the eighth. And I think it's pretty, we should be pretty confident that we're going to be meeting on the fifteenth as well, but we could. Post a meeting for the seventh, I'm not sure. I guess both agendas would be the same. Uh, the seventh and the eighth, finalize ATM articles and recommendations. Right?
Okay.
And Tuesdays, the, the meeting on. Well, Tom and I will talk about how the agendas will look, but we'll, we'll plan on posting two, two meetings, a Monday and a Tuesday meeting next, next week. Because as you said, Diane, we do.
But I have another question. The warrant hearing where we open it up. Bigger than a regular select board meeting to review the warrant. Is that still something we're going to do? And if so, when?
It's scheduled on the twenty-eighth.
The twenty-eighth.
Yeah, which we probably should add to our announcements from now on. We've said it, the FinCom's been saying it, but. It's the Mon, is that, am I right on that, guys? You know how I am with dates.
The twenty-eighth is a Monday.
Before, it's the Monday before town meeting.
And FinCom's got the lead on that?
Yep.
Okay. But we still, we mark it as a meeting, we post it as a meeting.
Yeah, because there could be, there could be some questions from residents on non-financial articles that. Typically, the select board may be, you know, asked to opine or answer, so it's all hands on board. Is that the right term? For that, the twenty-eighth.
Got that down.
Okay, okay. And so. We have Monday and then Tuesday, and two items that we've talked about are an update on the TA search and, you know, of course, finalizing. ATM, the warrant articles. Anything else? If not, I will take that motion.
Motion, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. So adjourned at seven forty-six. I think we did some good work tonight, and it's going to make next week. I think go more easily, so thanks to everyone for that. Same, probably same time, same place next week. If not, if it turns out with that we need Monday, we'll let everybody know.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.